Good evening. Thank you for joining this evening's VB Liberty Podcast. Our show broadcast, as you know, every Wednesday evening from seven to eight P. M. And you can review our broadcast on your Facebook page. You can put your comments and your questions in the comment section. I'm the host of the VB Liberty, John Moss. We are sponsored by the Tidewater Liberty Partners and the Virginia Beach Tea Party. And we're broadcasting from the facilities and thanking Senator Bill Distef here on Lynn Haven, Central Drive. All right, before we turn to our special guest, the Honorable Chris Taylor, the Council Member for District Eight. I'm going to make a few announcements about upcoming shows and events that are important, so I don't forget. On Thursday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven P. M. to eight P. M. The Virginia Beach Tea Party is hosting Jim Gorham from the National Right to Work Foundation at the Princess Anne Masonic Lodge, number twenty-five, at twenty-eight forty-nine Princess Anne Road. That's on the right-hand side, going towards the complex, just in the vicinity of the golf course. On Saturday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at nine A. M. Breakfast being served at eight thirty, for those who want to have breakfast. The Tidewater Liberty Partners are hosting Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and myself, former Council Member John Moss, to talk about various city issues at Mom's Kitchen at thirty-five oh-one Holland Road. If you're southbound, it's just past Loews. Next Wednesday, August thirtieth, on the VB Liberty Podcast, will be the City Auditor, Lyndon Ramirez. And he'll be talking about a number of recent audits, plus some other issues. So you think about the losing money at the convention center, losing money at the sportsplex, and the fact that the city has no methodology for determining return on investment for any of its partnerships. Very interesting evening. And then on Wednesday, September the sixth, right after Labor Day, at seven P. M. to eight P. M. My guest will be Virginia Beach School Member at Large, the Honorable Vicki Manning. So two great shows coming up and two great events coming up in the coming weeks. So now we have newly elected the first District Eight Councilmember under our new system, Chris Taylor. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, John.
I share with you in advance a little bit of topics I like to cover, but I'd like to give you a few minutes just to introduce yourself to the larger audience and maybe say a few things that are on your mind. And then we'll get back to some of the topics that I shared to you in advance. And then our producer, Robert K. Dean, about halfway through, will start posting questions that come from the audience. And then we'll wrap up promptly at eight, so people can hustle home and listen to the campaign debate or Tucker Carlson, if their choice. How about that?
For me, it'll be spending time with the kiddos.
Well, there you go. It's probably the more productive. But over to you, Chris.
All right, well, the Honorable John Moss, thank you for having me tonight on the show. Excited to be here at Virginia Beach Liberty. Been getting a few phone calls for this appearance, some from the right, some from the left, not many in the middle. But nonetheless, my name is Chris Taylor, born and raised, Virginia Beach native, sixth generation here to reside in the Kings Grant Little Neck area, attended public schools here in the city, raising my family here in the city. Our family has a small business in the city and now have the honor of serving the city. And so it's been quite a journey for a local, and it's an honor to serve on the council as well as to sit with you today. Few hobbies. I like to spend time with my family. Six-year-old Caleb, four-year-old Christian, and baby Charlotte, about ten weeks old.
Congratulations. I loved your pictures on Facebook of you and your family and their events. I think having a close family gives you the right perspective when you're sitting on the dais, because there's a lot of young people in our city with families, and that's another view.
Absolutely. And to my wife Kimberly for being supportive and helpful on this journey. So hi, Kimberly. I think she's probably watching tonight. But yeah, it's been seven months on Virginia Beach City Council. It was a tough campaign. Eleven grueling months with two other candidates in the race. And we found a way to get a win. And then you learn quickly that you don't campaign anymore. Now it's time to govern. And so we can, you know, I think we'll discuss some of the governing aspects tonight.
You know what they say, when you lose, you win, and when you win, you lose.
To your, to your, the, the, those watching, just thank you for having me as a guest tonight.
Well, you've been good company. We've had the, for the people on the left and the people on the right. We've had the police chief here. We've had people here like Chris Brown to talk about housing. So this is a ideologically neutral show. We, this isn't like some shows you watch where it's a got ya. It's or five thousand people talking at once, you know, like you see on some of the TV shows. This is just a chance to let you share yourself and your views and take some questions from the audience. So I thought, since you've had some great votes, and you know, I have had some, you know, private communications with you. I don't make all my communications public. I just try to give thoughts and insights other people might appreciate. But I do think people might be interested about your latest vote on the festival, which I concurred with, but that's unimportant, really. And the vote on the Amazon vote, which you, for the loan, I've been there before, the loan they vote. And I thought you might just like to share with the audience your analytical thought process on those two votes.
Okay, well, for the, the most recent Odyssey Festival collaboration with ECSC. Going in, I wasn't necessarily opposed until I started, you know, digging in, doing a little research. And I was surprised to learn that we had, we had done a study of Odyssey's collaboration with ECSC last year. And that study provided some insights, one of them being the consultant found that there was really no robust economic impact as a result of the concert. We discovered that for every dollar spent for this specific concert, it returned a thirty-five cents investment and in small business and our households that would never be sustainable. And then furthermore, it indicated that roughly seventy-three percent of the people that attended would have still attended something at the beach. And so we really didn't bring in, you know, five, six, seven, eight thousand new people. We were really just, I guess, gaining visitors or attendees from the market already that was there. So, yes, okay, sorry. So for me, there was really no huge demand for that weekend. We had Mocha, which, you know, articulated in, when my comments, the longest-running annual festival in the city of Virginia Beach, bringing roughly two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand people to the market. And so, you know, did we really need another enhancement that weekend, more sprinkles? I didn't think so, especially not at a cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars cash to the taxpayers. And so my position was, when you have a lack of planning, clearly some lack of communication or miscommunication between the art, Boardwalk Art Show and, and the, you know, the promoter, that was a concern. Making sure that the events that we do select are the right ones on the right weekends. There may actually be an opportunity to bring some guests in. And I wasn't sure why we needed a seven hundred and fifty thousand plus up to the already roughly eleven point seven million dollars in our advertising.
Well, I know the beach residents appreciate your homework, and I'm sure that they'll be looking forward to the explanation of your peers. And then there was the vote, which I watched this particular show from home. That's pretty nice, you know, really great. On the Amazon Road and Utilities, the twenty-two million dollar subsidy for the seventeen dollar an hour jobs. Maybe, because you were the lone they vote on that, but that doesn't mean you're not right. But doesn't mean you are wrong. It just means you had a different reasoning as to how you looked at it. And I'm sure the public would like to hear your perspective on, on that take.
Sure. And I like that approach, because, you know, I don't look at, you know, my colleagues' yes vote as right or, you know, it's not personal. For me, again, representing District Eight, which encompasses many, a large portion of Shore Drive, being next to District Nine, which Councilman John, you know, you're very familiar with Nine. There are major concerns in our city, major needs for infrastructure. And I was just taken back at our ability to cut certain road projects in the budget process. But then, you know, three, four weeks into the new fiscal year, an economic development opportunity comes that requires significant investment. We quite often hear about inflation and rising costs. And so is the twenty-two point five million, is that actually a accurate number? Or are we going to be looking at, you know, ten, twenty percent cost overruns? And as a, someone that's responsible, has a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens, I just couldn't digest that, that number.
I think that's a fair assessment. I think a constructive criticism that's gone from not just the current council, not just the past one, but in Virginia Beach, it's relatively been cash flush since its history, is that often we find, they find themselves making one-of-one decisions, and they never go back and comprehensively look at all the unfunded and saying, where does this compete? And where's the business case? So I think you, I know the audience. Now, I also like, what's the next step with Project Wayne?
That's a great question. I'm not sure if we've identified the next step. I haven't personally heard back from the client, the potential applicant. And I know there was early on a value proposition of sense of urgency. We got to get this done. Are they going to walk? And so I haven't heard that they've walked. But for me, again, that goes back to the citizens. You know, I'm not opposed to looking at moving the green line. I'm not a supporter of moving the green line. But if we were to look at moving the green line and potential development, that's a separate issue to be dealt with. Then we have an economic development opportunity. We need to change the zoning. We need to rush through this process. We need to ignore the comprehensive plan and give them this last large parcel of, of our agricultural land. And so for me, I'm not sure where we're at, but I've already voiced some significant concerns. And I'm not sure the public really desires that, that project to come forth.
Well, you brought up the comprehensive plan. And so since you mentioned comp plan, I thought I'd bring up a topic I'm familiar with. In advance of the bond referendum, the council unanimously adopted a resolution to garner the public support, which I think people were surprised when seventy-two percent of the people voted yes, when every other bond referendum except going back to nineteen eighty-six was defeated significantly by the voters. So part of that resolution was that the comp plan, the comprehensive plan, would be modified and amended to reflect that planning, that plans or development would not contradict or otherwise undermine the investment that the public was making. Now, while I was on council, twice, by a closed vote at the time, six to five, they refused to modify the comp plan at that time. I know the Planning Commission has been hostile, to be said the least. I know the comprehensive plan is currently now under review because of all of COVID and everything else. But I'm really asking, and I'm hearing, you know, I think we've got some questions from the public in advance sent to me that they like, is, are you going to be an advocate for council to keep its word that it made to the public when it asked them to endorse borrowing five hundred and sixty-seven point five million dollars? People feel like council is reneging on a promise they made. I realize you weren't on council, but it was council as a body that made the promise.
So that, I mean, that's a fair question. It's a, it's a valid issue. I've heard, you know, that city councils are, make sure I say this right, a continuous or continual body. But that does, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's always accurate or that's what happens. There are, for instance, we had the six-five vote for the special election versus appointment. I think you were one of the six that supported that.
No.
No, you were.
I was one of the five that voted against, not, go back. We voted for referendum in August. That was Jessica Abbott. I was one of the five that voted for that, along with Aaron, Jessica, I think Ms. Wooton and Aaron.
Okay.
Then we had a vote in December thirteenth, the last meeting that we had of the year to do this listening tour. I was one of the five votes that said, no, it wasn't necessary. The law's pretty clear. The judge is pretty clear. We don't have a choice.
Okay.
And then it came up again, and you were part of the five, and the six people continued to listen. And then the lawyers told you probably what they told us in December, you can listen all you want, but there's no legal avenue to change ten-one. And then this summer, they said it publicly, what they've said privately, and now everybody's in favor after we spent four hundred thousand dollars to learn the obvious.
So to your specific question, I think, to, to your specific question, we should honor our word. There is an investment when it, when you talk about economic development, when you look at building homes. And ultimately, we always hear about collaboration. And when it comes to absorbing some of these costs to protect our environment and to prevent flooding, there's a seat at the table for the developers to absorb some of those costs. And so I know there are council members that don't believe that everyone understood the language, that there was some confusion and a lack of clarity around what they were really voting on. But I think ultimately the people spoke, and we need to do our best to keep our word.
Well, my response was always, well, if you think there was confusion, then just don't issue that debt and don't spend the money. But anyway, that's a different story. I didn't know if you had any perspective. I know you've looked at those audit reports, but what always comes to my mind when I look at an audit report is, who knew what, when, and where? And on this, on the Sports Center, they went through two and a quarter million dollars before we, the council, were ever told that the reserve had been exhausted. And I think you, you know, probably, so how is it that someone was approving burning down the reserve? Who on the city side was approving that? And who's accountable for not telling you? Because now the public looks to you as one of eleven people who's watching the farm. And then the pavilion likewise. So I, I know it must be very frustrating to you to have to answer questions when you, you weren't informed in a time to act. So I guess the real thing is, what is council doing to make sure those lessons learned? What direction does the manager get from council as a body that you shouldn't be the last ones to know that we burned through two and a quarter million dollars of reserve and we're still another million dollars short? What direction, how is that going to be better going forward?
So I think I lean on my background, corporate experience, working at a consultant practice, learning and development, going into city governments, going into large corporations. And one of the things we always looked at when we first met with the client was, did they have a reactive culture or a proactive culture? Were they getting ahead of problems or were they trying to solve them once the problems kind of bubbled up? And so for me, I think the audit presentations that we receive are a good time to pause and review the information, see where we're at. And so we received the audit of the Sports Center, and we knew in February that they were missing submission of reporting. We hadn't received some finances. And so that should have been, you know, a red flag. But again, when you have five new members, when you have a new body, we're going into budget season. Again, no blame, but I think there is a responsibility on behalf of, of individual members to ask those questions. And if there aren't, if, if we're not asking those questions, I'm not sure with what's on the manager's plate, he's going to come to us and say, hey, you know what, this is going on here. This is going on here. And so that's why I've been trying, I've attempted to dig in and try to ask more specific questions. Because if, in private business, if you're the banker and you have, let's say, a client, and they don't pay their note for six months, do you start calling them thirty days in, sixty days in? Or do you wait till they go another eight months and then go, hey, what's going on? I need you to make up the rears? That's not a good situation for the lender or the lendee. And so I think we're in a position now where there has to be more collaboration. The manager does report to the council, but as you know, in your experience sitting on city council, if we're not giving direction or putting pressure or asking specific questions, there is a tendency to just continue moving forward with all the other issues that we're dealing with.
Well, that gets to the point of recycling, and this gets back to the Sports Center wants to renegotiate. You know, we have a contract for recycling. They posted a performance bond. It was a five-year contract. We've held them to that contract despite all the other issues, because we could rely on the performance bond to get the job done. So we haven't been willing to renegotiate the contract at all, which rightfully so. I think that's, but now someone else wants to be released from their requirement and not eat that million dollars. When I'm thinking, well, why are they, how are they different than recycling? Shouldn't they have, either they, they can't eat it, then maybe we should get a different operator. I just sometimes think it's, you can always go to taxpayers to be bailed out and that we never hold these people accountable like you would in the business. You would say, hey, and you'd be looking to see who's being held accountable for the not, not telling you. You have a problem for it's expensive and makes the public looks like you're not doing your job, but you are. But you don't know what you don't know.
Correct.
And I, and I have empathy for that. But, but, but people should be held accountable who did know and then didn't tell you. But I just, I just throw that out as that, because I know recycling is a, is another issue that we.
And in District Eight, I've heard loud and clear from residents, you know, they're willing to pay a little bit more. I don't think they, they want to load up their Durango, load up the Tahoe and take their trash to wherever. And so that brings up, you know, again, one of the surprises for me, and maybe I was a little naive, is, you know, that negotiation, that business acumen piece, it's not necessarily a checkmark in government.
Not always, but when people see it, it's not universally across the city. The person that lives in Aragona Village that gets an extra ten bucks isn't the person in Bay Colony.
You're correct. Absolutely. And the person that's driving the Tahoe that's filling up their gas tank may not be the individual in another district that's putting ten bucks in just to get to work.
Or just put, or put everything in the trash can. I think that's a very difficult, I've posted on that, you've probably seen, that's a very difficult issue that takes a lot of knowledge.
And do you mind if we pause here? Because it also relates to the labor force and collective bargaining is before us. And, you know, I'm not one to stand on, you know, the, you know, on the stage and say, look at me. But I went, I approached our manager, because, you know, many people know we had, we had a baby in June. Baby Charlotte came June ninth. We received a ton of gifts. We had to break down boxes, and my wife calls in to get the boxes picked up, and they say, we'll be there July twelfth. This is June tenth, eleventh, and so that's a month. And that was concerning, and I started hearing more from residents, from citizens with the same issues. And it really hadn't come to council. And I went to the manager and said, I think we have an issue. And our manager really, he didn't say we don't have an issue, but it hadn't been brought to us. And after a little digging in and further investigation, that's when we learned that we had gone from eleven vacancies for CDL to twenty-six. I mean, that's a, that's a double-digit jump. And so these are the same, when, when you talk about recycling, we're losing CDL drivers, not to Chesapeake, not to Norfolk, not to Portsmouth, but to the private sector. And again, if you start off at sixteen dollars an hour, City of Virginia Beach, driving a truck, or let's say some are less, some a little bit more sixteen fifty, I've said this, if it's my son or daughter, they can go to Wawa for fifteen fifty in the air conditioning.
Yeah, but they can't get a defined benefit pension plan, and they can't get hundred percent of their health insurance and eighty-five percent of their family's insurance, fourteen holidays, two days of annual leave, and thirteen days of sick leave.
But what's your pull, what's your pull that you're pulling from?
Well, my point is, it may mean it's a time to use private sector to deliver the service.
Fair enough.
Because people don't value future benefits. They value pay, and we current pay.
Especially if you're driving from Portsmouth for that sixteen fifty.
Right. So I think sometimes when we have this benefit package, it's attractive to people who are making bigger money. When people who aren't, it's not attractive, because you can't spend a benefit at the grocery store.
And just for the, the listeners' knowledge, at Wawa, they are paying, they are giving benefits now.
Not defined.
Not defined, but you know, there are, again, for that worker, it may be more valuable.
I agree with you, which we might want to go to a private sector provider of the service, because given our benefit structure, we're not agile enough to be responsive to get the employment that we need.
Fair point.
And if I can get my car, I can call someone to come pick up my stuff. I get a dumpster at my yard, three hundred bucks.
Yep, loaded up.
Weeks versus a thirty-five dollar thing, which you can't really put anything in. But nonetheless, everybody's different. But the point being is, I think, as we look at structural employment, as you're talking about, some of our agility isn't attractive to a worker who isn't looking for a big benefit package. They want a higher upfront wage.
Wage to take care of their family. Yeah, so it is something to look into.
For looking at that, because I think that, that's an important issue, since labor is such a big part. But we don't always have to do the service ourselves.
And here's a, it's an easy lift. Go out, stop a trash truck, stop a dump truck, stop a public utility truck, and just talk with them. And that's what I did for a month, and I started learning more about the people working for our city, realizing that for some of them, they're making a sacrifice for that seventeen bucks an hour to drive from Portsmouth or Newport News or Hampton. But they have a young child, and they are, you know, trying to stabilize and get to that next place. And so they're willing for the short term to sacrifice, but I don't know if we can ask them to sacrifice for the long term.
It's, it's, it's tough. And I think sometimes we'll be going to the private sector more to get stuff done, because it's, they can do it at a higher wage than the employee, but a lower net cost. And I think we just, that's going to be true, not for all jobs.
Not for all.
But, or if you have a special service and you might have to pay to get the service.
Fair enough.
And I wouldn't mind paying if I had to come pick them up today. I'd pick them up today. What were some of your reflections on the retreat that just ended?
So overall, I was pleased with the retreat, again, coming from my time in the corporate, private sector. I did a lot of, a lot of consultant engagements, you know, facilitator-led. I liked the, the tone. I liked how the facilitator, the facilitator didn't necessarily inject herself into the conversation. She allowed us to really have a discussion, which is much needed amongst the body, to sometimes just stay on one item for thirty minutes is okay. I'm not sure if we clearly define our priorities for staff, but we did identify priorities. But in terms of that clear, maybe five or six things we're gonna do. Again, in the private sector, you'll hear me make that comparison. You leave a boardroom, you leave a meeting, there's an action item, and they need to get done, or it could be your job. I am having to adjust to.
Just so you know, that's not just the private sector. When I worked for the submarine force, meetings were for decisions, not for a lot of discussion. People did their homework before they came. I think it's legislative processes, it's a different, everybody's an independent contractor.
So I'm trying to be patient.
It's a little different, but I do have a question. I noticed that your number, the number, I don't know if it's number two, but a priority was affordable housing. And that's something, and I often think, what do you see as, when I look at the Fed raising interest rates, you know, so that mortgages go up to eight percent, there isn't, what, what tools does the city have? It doesn't have any monetary tools. It doesn't have any fiscal policy tools that make a meaningful difference in housing prices. It has no monetary tools. So when we're looking at affordable housing and setting expectations, what tools do you see, given the current fiscal climate and monetary policy at the national level that's setting interest rates? How do we offset that with anything that the tools that the city has?
Yeah, and affordable housing, it depends, again, who, who are you talking to?
If housing being less than thirty percent of someone's median family, the median family income.
So that's the definition of affordable housing.
That the median family income for the median fam, but citywide.
Yeah, citywide, when I'm speaking with individuals, more so it's the established family that has a young adult that is coming back to the area from college or looking to work, and, and they're forced to live at home because they cannot afford an apartment, or it makes more sense for them to stay at home, because for the same amount of space, they're going to spend two or three thousand dollars a month. So that is a, a component of affordability, not by definition of affordable housing. Or when you look at our aging population, I took care of my great-grandmother for almost five years. We, we went around looking at places. We, we went around looking at places we could, uh, have her reside and it was, this is in 2012. Seven or eight thousand dollars.
A month.
For her to share a room. And this was a 102-year-old woman. She told me that's just not going to happen. And so it was cheaper to go into a community with some older stock and purchase a home. Get her a nurse and a roommate to provide that comfort for her. Now think about that, when it's cheaper, and that's, that's no longer, it's cheaper to buy a home than to place her in a, a affordable senior housing.
I've been through that with my mom who's since passed. I had, I can totally empathize with your whole story.
So my point though, is for the affordable piece, it's, we need to kind of streamline, what are we looking at? I think a land, I think a land trust could be something good because what I don't like, um, is when we take city-owned property and then we sell it to private developers at a loss or below market rate. So you've been in council, you've been in closed session, you've been in open session, when it seems like when developers, not all, when individuals come to us, they want to buy below market rate. When they want to sell to us, we want to sell at 30% above appraisal rate. And so I think we have to make better decisions. When you look at Laskin Road Annex, uh, again, that was a school board piece, but why not collaborate with your city council? We could have purchased that property for $2 million, $2.5 million and then collaborated with a multifamily developer to build affordable housing. There are those opportunities in our city, uh, that we haven't taken advantage of in the past.
I would, couldn't agree more. And we have an agency that in fact does that. The Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation actually owns 435 homes in Virginia Beach, townhouses and single families.
Specific, more, more of them in District, in, uh, Dr. Millie Ross Hammond's district.
Well, not all, but they're somewhere in, in Erin, Mrs. Rouse's district as well. And, uh, two veteran housing facilities operate, one in Chesapeake, one in Virginia Beach. So I do think there's an agency and I've often pushed it when we sold land around, why aren't we giving this land? And you probably heard me maybe on the Mike and Kerry show, we own the property, it used to be Circuit City. We talked about workforce housing for single people. That's very close to a lot of people working at, I'll call it lower-end wages. That that property maybe for workforce development has a higher value for workforce development than business development.
And I think the pushback and challenge that I've heard, and, uh, again, this is not a target, a shot at anybody. Um, but when you have, uh, individuals that, um, are a little bit more friendly with the development community, there's a narrative or a storyline that says that property is too valuable for workforce housing.
Too valuable to take care of our people who are our most important asset. I don't, I don't buy none. I'm just sharing with you. When people look and say, we have problems and we take money, because people have a problem affording staying in their own home.
Absolutely.
Property taxes, flood insurance, insurance, we have affordable, affordable government issues. But, but in reality, we have the ability, just it's where are the priorities are. I think you pointed out, well, I think we have the ability to help ourselves.
So I think two pieces of, two low-hanging fruit, and again, I may take, you know, some heat from the right is, I think we need to do the land trust, stand it up with some money and start taking on some opportunities to buy little pieces that we can develop. And then number two, we have a serious homelessness issue. What are we doing? Uh, I think there's an opportunity to, um, you know, with, with aging, with the homeless and then some that are just in need of housing, uh, to provide some assistance.
I think if you package that with tax relief, tax rate relief, so people can afford to stay in their own home they already have.
Yeah.
Then I think it's a question of, not that we can't, but it seems like we can do everything to spend money, but nothing to give money back. We end up with budget surpluses and have overperforming revenues. So I think, I think people are just looking for private sector where we don't mind retained earnings, but we're looking for a dividend too.
Okay.
So I think that's really the issue, because I think you're always governing from the middle. But people definitely feel like it's been take, 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 surplus, surplus, surplus and no, no relief.
Assistance.
No assistance to everybody. Robert, do we have some questions from the audience you want to share? Chris and I are just having a good time here.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, great. Thank you for coming.
I would really be interested in Councilman Taylor's answer to how recent real estate tax increases due to increased assessments and on-rate effective local rental prices and home affordability.
So that's, that's kind of a, a two-piece, two-part. So, uh, for the, the individual answer, asking the question, I spent time in multi, in the multifamily industry and the challenge with rents is they're regulated by the owner, property owner. So I've met residents that are in a situation where their landlord, um, understands the challenges, uh, maybe has the property that there's some equity in paid off and they make a choice to provide a fair rent. Um, I had someone reach out to me last week, a landlord that has 68 affordable housing units in our city. And because of the rise in that real estate tax rate, um, he's having to go up on his affordable housing and it's frustrating him because he's trying to do something good.
I've heard that story myself.
But ultimately, and I asked him the question, I mean, you're well below market rate. I mean, you're, you know, 30% down, you know, from the two bedroom down the street. Uh, to the land, to the homeowners, um, depending on, you know, their employment status. Again, District Eight is made up of retirees, made up of, you know, millennials, made up of a lot of different individuals that own homes. So for some I've heard, especially in the, uh, minority community, that this is an opportunity for them to tap into equity they've never had. And that's a, that is a side of the coin. So they're not complaining because it is giving them an ability to take out some equity, maybe pay for their child to go to school. I know my parents didn't have that ability to tap into equity in their home, so I have student loans. Um, and so it's a great question, um, but we have to look at the rate, uh, we have to look at the policy, how we're coming up with that. And then I think it's, the body has authority or at least a voice in stating to the manager, hey, if we're going to continue to see these types of increases, what options do we have? Because people are struggling. People are going to the grocery store and their dollars going, it's not going as far. People are, you know, I, we had back-to-school shopping this week. I, I have two, a six and a four-year-old.
Yeah. I just saw a show, back school supplies were up 18 to 25%.
I mean, pencils used to be nickel, you know, pens, book bags. Um, so I feel, I feel you for whoever's, you know, whoever's asking that question, there are things we can do. Um, but ultimately I think we have to get ahead of it and, and try to draft or craft policy that will bring relief.
Well, I'm glad you said that because historically I was unsuccessful. Most, most bodies, the governor, the president, a company would give their corporate guidance, top-line guidance, right? That would govern, we, we want to take risk in this area. We don't want to take risk in that area. We want to bring down, we want to hold our labor cost at no more than 50% of estimated revenues, all these things, guidance.
Guidance.
As a body to, the board might provide that to the CEO or the CEO. But council never comes together and votes on a budget resolution like the general assembly does or like Congress does. So there isn't any body guidance. There's only 11 people having 11 individual conversations. So no one ever knows what everyone said except the manager. I hope, I wish you luck in driving to the goal of the council would provide upfront guidance.
And again, that goes back to that cultural piece of reactive versus proactive. And so, uh, no blind game.
No, no, I'm just saying it's an opportunity we haven't used.
Hmm. Okay. That's fair.
And I'm just saying, I hope we exploit that. Another question, Robert.
Yes, uh, my old stomping grounds, my last duty station, Marine Corps was Charleston.
Okay.
Uh, what's come back from that $700 a night, uh, trip, uh, into Charleston? I know you didn't go.
I did not. I wanted, I did, early on I had, I, I thought I was going to go and then again, it was a month before the baby came and I, I said, that might not be wise to go, uh, you know, to the five-star, uh, with Kim at home with the, the two boys and, and eight months pregnant. Um, I think again, uh, got a lot of pushback, but there is value in, uh, regional collaboration and visiting different, uh, uh, localities. But for me, you know, I was, I sit as a liaison to the Housing Advisory Board and I was speaking with someone, Charleston had just been up here, looking at what we're doing in some specific areas.
But did anyone look at the differences and lack of commonality between Charleston and Virginia Beach?
I'm not gonna, no comment. So did we have to send, uh, you know, as many people as we did? And, and that's a question, I think, when you look at, when we get into this year's, this year's budget, you know, is there some room to cut some fat in terms of travel? Because again, in the private sector, I remember at DuPont, uh, when, when revenue was down, when we were off-target, you would get notices saying, we're cutting travel. If it's not necessary to close the deal, then make a phone call. And so, um, I'm not going to tear into those that went to Charleston. Hopefully they brought something back. I haven't really got a out, a, 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 a great output report. Um, but ultimately it's, it's money spent, it's done and we got to push forward.
Well, here's a question. We talked about, um, two years ago, when we had used cars that were being driven up for reasons unrelated to wage growth or just historical perturbations to the price of used cars. We use that justification, I brought that forward and council agreed, we reduced the assessment, not the rate.
Not the rate.
By, by 25%. Well, now we have the same situation with housing. We have unprecedented historical relationships, unprecedented monetary policy, unprecedented demographics, demand and supply, capitalization rate, access to capital, uh, incomes relative to price and prices are way out of this. All this is historically unprecedented. So why wouldn't we use that same logic to say government shouldn't be benefiting because houses still stayed way high, even though real purchasing power of families has fallen 9%? Why wouldn't we be making an adjustment for economic circumstances? Whenever the assessments for the book value for next year are being determined, why doesn't the methodology? Cause it takes into account income for commercial properties, right?
It does. And they have benefited from that formula.
And, and they should, because they appreciated much less than, than houses. Houses is where the big money is, residents. But the logic that we use for car tax adjustments applies to homes.
I agree.
So, I mean, I just think it's, because I just, I'm just concerned, not that there's a fixed cost of government, which we've got to fund, but people are, can't fund their own living standard without borrowing money and that's not good. I mean, I just, we gotta be, we gotta find a balance. And I know you've been sensitive to that. I've appreciated your remarks. You've done a great job and say, I agree with you on everything, but you have done your homework on why you think what you do. And, and I think that's appreciated. Is there another question from the audience, Robert?
Yes, I have two. First one is in the White Cliff Church, uh, BMP or, uh, Pondine Lake there.
That's the conditional use permit request.
And it's in your district.
Yes.
And these folks want to know, how do you, where do you stand on that?
So as I've stated, I haven't taken a, a position, uh, but I have stated, I don't think it's wise to fill in ponds or waterways to build anything, um, that someone's going to reside in. But ultimately we have to look at the application and I've, I've consulted with our city attorney. I think we have to be careful, especially with, uh, private land use and, and ownership rights. Um, and so I think the planning commission took a position, it's coming before us. Um, but I am an advocate for number one, community engagement. The people have spoken. It's clear, um, this is important to, to that neighborhood. And ultimately, um, we have to make a decision, um, coming up here in a few weeks, as if we think this is wise in terms of, uh, of the change and then the potential use, especially as we're looking at flooding and, um, and that referendum. But ultimately I have not taken a, a yay or nay position, but I'm very supportive of what I've heard so far from the community. And I think we have a developer that, uh, has acknowledged the people are concerned. And my hope is that we'll be able to come together, uh, and, and find a solution that pleases everyone, which doesn't happen often.
Yep. And you were very wise to be consulting the city attorney.
Another question is concerning this convention center hotel that's been bantered during the, uh, retreat. And, uh, why is this ugly serpent raising its head again?
So what is the serpent?
The hotel.
The hotel is the serpent? Okay. Um, I mean, ultimately, uh, all of us have traveled to other large cities. You do need, uh, a facility and a, a nice hotel, uh, if you're going to attract who we say we want to attract.
That's a big question. Do we want to attract or do we want to get rid of the convention center?
The question. And if we want to keep the convention center and attract these large groups, then ideally they may want a better option than what we have right there at the convention center.
I only request that you go back and revisit when we turned this down during Mayor Sessom's term when Bill DeStef and Glenn Davis and I were all on council, that got, and Lewis Jones rejected because all the rhetoric that we heard, when we called the people, we're a fourth-tier convention at best and what you have to give away to get something, all you're really doing is subsidizing a profit and consuming, uh, critical debt. So that, that's a good history to go through. We went through that once before. And the sales pitch, you know, when you, when you pushed away the bubbles, you know, there wasn't much water in the pan.
So for me on, in the convention center hotel, the issue, um, that I've been vocal about is the way the process went. Um, and how we dealt with that respondent. Um, when you talk about, uh, and I know this is a buzzword, but equity.
Which proposal was it?
Capstone.
Okay.
Um, I mean, there was.
There were several that we had.
Scheduled presentation. And so again, I'll go back to the corporate sector, just being respectful. If someone is communicated with that they're, they're welcome to come and do a presentation. And I, I traveled all across, uh, the United States and there were some places, uh, where, you know, we had a phone call and they didn't know Chris Taylor was 6'5" African-American guy. When I showed up, they hadn't, never had a presentation from a 6'5" African-American guy and we didn't get too far. That's, but they were respectful. The way we treated Capstone by calling them on, you know, Good Friday and saying, you're not welcome on Monday. Uh, I just don't think that's the way we should deal with people in business. And so it wasn't about the actual convention center hotel. It was about when you have a commitment to bring someone to town, to give a presentation that you've asked for and then all of us out of nowhere, you tell them you're not, you're no longer welcome. Uh, that's going to cause a problem for us in terms of how we do business and how we're seen doing business. And that for me is very concerning.
Yeah. I would be asking, would not say it here, is who was involved in making the commitment? And you know, that's, sometimes it's, you know, when you deal with 11 independent contractors, uh, and someone says, oh, two people made a commitment, but six people didn't make a commitment and the other five didn't know about it. Then feathers get ruffled and so now it's, uh, it's ugly.
So ultimately I think that's going to be, uh, that I made it a priority in terms of we all at the retreat, got to list our priorities. We need to make a decision. Um, if it's, if we do a analysis and it's not going to change anything and it's going to require another $100 million of taxpayers' money, it's probably not a wise idea. But if we do have a world-class developer that wants to come to town and we have a plan and they're not asking for anything, I, I think we should at least hear them out.
You know what I think would be great? We never did this, I'd never get it done, but maybe you can. Is when the priorities are done, they go out on the agenda and there's a formal vote for their adoption and the public gets to comment. But we've never done that, because then you know, they are the body's priorities by a vote. Cause informal discussions is just that.
Discussions, absolutely. So I hope I answered that person's question.
I have two comments that came in. Uh, one was on the lake by White Cliff.
White Cliff, yep.
Uh, so far right now, they said there's 4,600 petition signatures.
That's a significant number. Yes.
Yeah, very significant. The other one was the Doubletree. There's already a hotel there.
There is a Doubletree there.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's, uh, to the level of convention center hotel that we're discussing. Uh, the Doubletree and speaking with their management, they're very pleased with the business they're getting from the sports center. They're right there. Um, but again, think about if you are, we don't have any Fortune 100 companies here in Hampton Roads or in Virginia Beach. I don't think so.
None in Hampton Roads.
So just think about if you're that convention planner and you're bringing your executives to town for HR conference or for any other conference and these individuals, uh, are used to traveling to Charlotte, to, you know, Tampa, uh, to Houston, to Phoenix, and then we come here and their offering is Doubletree. Again, I was in the hospitality business. Doubletree's not a bad brand, Hilton, but that's not a convention center hotel.
I think it all comes down to what do you have to give and what are these other places having to give? And why does the hotel have to get a subsidy? And what's the opportunity cost of the capital allocation? Are you using land that you previously condemned by the public?
Yes.
I think.
Supermajority vote is a big, is a big lift.
It's like, it is. And I think all it comes down to is, because we can't show a business case for Atlantic Park. We can't show a business case for. We can't show a business case for any of these events.
Say that out loud, John.
But it's true. I'm saying it out loud. So when people can't say, show me what goes into the unrestricted general fund. And can I earn that amount of money doing something else that requires me not to spend as much of investment? That's what, if you're going to get into private business or a partner, then you're going to be like Warren Buffett. You've got to be getting a, a competitive return, not just activity that puts money in other people's pocket, but.
Add a cost to the taxpayer.
And/or use of debt, even if they're paying for it. That's debt capacity that isn't going to build a rec center in a certain district.
And we get back to the root, which is priorities.
Yes, I'm with you.
Discussion. And, you know.
I applaud your, applaud you pushing for discussion and conscious choices. I, I, I don't have to agree with your choice, but conscious choices are preferred to, uh, blind choices. Yes, Robert.
These are just comments on, we're never going to become a Tampa, Las Vegas, Virginia Beach needs to, I guess for that. And then someone, Mark Stolz said they go to the Cavalier, the Marriott Embassy, and they, they just shuttle to the convention center. They wanted to be on the oceanfront. And so that's, uh, that's part of it.
Well, there always has been that debate that the convention center was not built on the oceanfront.
I brought this up to, uh, a few individuals in private was when you look at the developments that have come, the new hotels, they have a large amount of convention space.
They do.
And we really haven't had the conversation of, are they competing with our own convention center? And I've been in some of these newer properties when these large conventions are here and I go, why didn't they go to the convention center? And that's a fair question. But, so if we continue adding inventory for convention space at the oceanfront, that's newer and better condition, uh, can offer more competitive rates, then it is going to compete with our own, uh, CVB.
An insight, which, you know, if you look at, and I wonder the priorities of what to do with our remaining vacant land and assuming that between lots of issues that the green line is more or less maintained. Uh, and 85% of our tax base is residential. It grows faster than all the rest of the tax base and it hasn't changed since 1986. The proportion has remained unchanged, not likely to change going forward. It's too big a base. So then it says is, should our strategy be one of looking at our inventory of housing that's aged? And do we look at homestead exemptions? Do we look at other things that gives people who own their home an incentive to redevelop that property so that when they depart or redevelop and decide to sell, that we have a more competitive contemporary product in our aging neighborhoods to attract people to move here? We've, because that really is where the money is.
And I mean, I think that's also, um, a key variable in the affordable housing conversation is you take older stock communities where someone bought in the eighties or the nineties.
Or the sixties like Aragona.
Individuals getting older and their child, they end up passing away. Their child doesn't want to stay in that house. They could sell it and they get that equity. So that's a different situation. Um, then you have the situation where you have some of those aging homes where they get behind. Uh, we just came out of COVID. You know, you had the, you know, relief with a lot of the mortgages. People didn't necessarily save, not saying they couldn't save or they could, but they just didn't.
Right.
And then they get in a situation where they're six months, eight months, nine months behind. Now they got to get caught up. And that home goes into foreclosure and investors are coming in. So I've, you know, I bought my first home, um, at 22 out of Wesleyan in a non, not very desirable neighborhood. Those homes, uh, which back in 2007 were selling for 180,000, uh, townhomes, uh, again, not desirable. Um, some crime in the neighborhood, but not, you know, not very, not dangerous, but some crime. Um, those homes are now selling for 230, 240,000. But the problem is investors are coming in and scooping them up at 190, 200, putting some money in and then either flipping them, which again, open, open market, or they realize that they can escalate the rents. And so now you, you take a $180,000 townhome that you got for 160 or, you know, 170, you put $10,000 in and then you list it for 20, $200 a month. I mean, that's a great turnaround on your dollar. We can't fault those individuals.
No, they're not doing it now.
They're not. And so, I mean, I think this is a, a, a broader issue and it's, it's something that if we don't take a look at and start coming up with policies, I don't think it's going to get any better, John.
Well, I'm thinking, when I talked, when I was working at, I actually would talk to young lieutenant commanders with families and ask them where they were living. They disproportionately, rarely would you find someone that, unless they were stationed Ocean Interden, we say Virginia Beach. They'd be Chesapeake, Isle of Wight. And I'd ask them why and they said, well, we like neighborhoods, but the neighborhoods we like, we can't afford.
There you go.
And the neighborhoods we can afford are really dated. So my point being, since it's discretionary income that drives transactional revenue and drives other jobs, how do you make people that are in that home, that've been in that home for maybe they paid it off and they're not staying in the area or whatever the reason is, but they see the advantage that under the right circumstance, rather than the developer buying and bulldozing.
And these are just, some of these are just small business owners, mom and pop shops.
I know. I'm talking about just the owners themselves who live in their own home.
Yeah.
Would a homestead exemption citywide, whatever be a way to provide tax relief to our lower income families, because it's a constant dollar. Florida has, uh, have homestead exemptions. And that's provides, I just think we're going to have to find ways to allow that people can afford to maintain their homes, but doing it in a way that people that can't afford their homes, you know, get the homestead exemption too, but they still got a higher valued property. They're paying taxes, but it does help the workforce people that might be able to use that 50,000 bucks housing exemption like Florida has for homestead if you, you know.
I have to look into that.
We're about to look at some creative solutions that target the people we're trying to help, but are uniform such that you're not being a subsidy. People tend to, you know, you get 50,000 on a $300,000 home, isn't it? They get 50,000 on a million.
It's not.
I have the last two, John.
Alrighty, go for it.
One is, uh, hey, Mrs. Howard, what is our return on investment for all these festivals? When the revenue goes to the tip, do you keep raising our taxes?
That question is, it remains to be unanswered. Um, I think the challenge, again, we go back to culture, is you have a large portion of, uh, of, we'll just say stakeholders that look at ROI as, uh, the benefit to the resort community. And then you have other stakeholders that look at ROI as the return on that investment. And so I'm not sure, uh, I have an answer to the specific question, but I'll, I'll give you the, the, the festivals. There are a lot of residents that have enjoyed the beach, the bull riding at the beach and beach it and so on and so forth. And it's added to their experience, we'll say. And they're not thinking about the return on the dollar. They're thinking, I had a good time and, uh, I'll go on with my business. Then you have another group that feels like they've been left out, that they aren't, their needs aren't being heard. Their voice isn't being heard and going, okay, well, if we're going to spend a dollar to get 35 cents back, let's spend that dollar over here. And so I haven't, um, I don't think we have a methodology that defines the ROI for festivals, for events. Uh, maybe I shouldn't say that out loud, but, um, but that's not some, that's something we can work on.
Exactly.
And so again, I'm not here to, you know, um, call anyone out. It's just, this is another issue we have. And that was the concern with my last no vote was, do we really need this injection? Do we really need to spend this money? And believe it or not, John, there's emails that I've received that says, bring it, please. We needed, we want something to do. And then there's some that say, are you crazy?
I, I'm sure that there are both sides of the equation and I think always the difficult part, as you know, is each individual council member, now districts are not accountable to everyone. They're only accountable to their district. Even though they have obligation to everyone, they're not accountable to everyone.
Not accountable.
They just owe the people their reasoning and then people have to decide if they like the Warren Buffett test or they like the emotional test, but, you know, but sometimes the people who pay have a different view than the people who get the benefit of what someone else pays. But that's always a challenge in government. And I just think you share with people the thought process you bring. And I think that's the value of this show is to give you a chance to let people know how you come to issues and they don't have to agree, but they, they should agree that you are thoughtful about the decisions you do come to. And that's all you could ask.
That's fair.
Got one last thing? Yep.
Uh, it's from Mrs. Marsh. Why are hotel assessments down? They are paying less tax at the resort than the Westin Hotel and then the resort over on Shore Drive, I guess she's referring to.
Delta.
Whatever the name of.
So when you look at.
Harvey Shiftler place.
When you look at, um, and again, I'm, I'm not an expert. I'm not, I don't want to speak out of turn. Um, similar to property, property values go up, taxes go up, your tax rate may not go up, but your value goes up. I think what we're seeing in the resort community right now is you see room rates are going up, but not necessarily occupancy. So they may not be selling out as they were pre-COVID on, you know, this weekend, but that rate's 20 or $30 higher. And ultimately that's where we see the lag and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think there's a, either a 12 month or 24 month lag.
There's a lag because of the one they can get their income tax return. But you may recall, you wouldn't recall this, but Robert would, when Dr. Cook did his analysis and, you know, and talked about how convention hotels and convention things were not good investments for the taxpayer. He did that at great length. He's an expert witness to in court cases. But he said is, it's not just the gross revenue. It's all gets down to the profitability. Now, the land is viewed on the land value and it's not affected by how much money they earn. It's the improvements that are valued based on the profitability, not gross revenues. And so that's why the profitability of the hotels hasn't been as high, even though like income's gone up, but so your expenses and so your profitability, your margin didn't grow at Polish Frank. And so that impacts, but you're right, there is a lag of at least a year because of income statements. Well, that brings us to the close. Uh, this has been a wonderful hour. And it just went by quickly, but as always, as I expected, you've done a great job. I've appreciated having on your show. You, you're representing district eight well.
Thank you.
People, uh, should be very proud that they have a, a thoughtful analytical rep. They might not always agree with, but I think you approach issues honest and I think there's nothing keeps you humble like your wife and kids.
Yeah. Well, my wife, I wanted to share this with you, John, because, uh, I had a council member, uh, approached me a couple of weeks ago. They said my new nickname was Aaron Moss. So for your crowd, they can, again, Aaron Rouse, a teammate of mine at the first colonial. And they said I was a blend between Aaron and, and John. So I'm not sure the comparison, but I wanted to share that with you. I'm getting the heat.
All right. What was the closeout? Join us next Wednesday night and you will hear from the city auditor, London Ramirez. And in the meantime, you can all go jump and watch Fox or Tucker Carlson or Netflix or go do something with your family that's more important. Alrighty, y'all take care. Good night. Thanks everyone for watching.